All right, I'm here with Taylor Kingman, who is seeking reelection for school board position District 3. And I'm asking the same questions of all the candidates. You are acknowledging to me and to everyone listening that you have no foreknowledge of the questions that I'll be asking, correct?
Correct.
All right, so I'm gonna start off with a little different kind of question. Tell us something unique about yourself. That has stumped everyone, so.
I have nine and a half toes. My little brother dropped a weight on my foot when I was five years old and severed one of my toes.
Ouch!
So, but other than that, I'm pretty normal.
Okay, well, that was a different answer than I've gotten from anyone. So, what do you bring to the table that helps enhance the school board?
So, first of all, I've been on the school board for the last four years. I think the experience from being on the board is valuable. I ran for the school board four years ago, partly because I felt that the board did have a significant amount of old blood on it and felt that as a younger member of our community who had children in the district, that it was our turn to kind of carry some of that weight and that the group ahead of us had done a great job, but it was our turn to do some of the carrying of the weight. Having been on the board for the last four years, I realized that there are some things that take some steadiness and some continuity in order to get lasting change. One of those is, you know, we've done some significant investment in reading and math in our elementary schools. And getting, being able to continue those programs, I think is very important because we're seeing progress in them. And so, since we're seeing progress, I really want to be able to continue those over the next four years.
So, I think you're kind of answering my next question, which is, what motivated you to run again for school board? So, I think you're answering that.
Absolutely, so I ran again because I wanted to be able to see some programs that we've started come more to fruition. As everyone knows with COVID, some of our external tests are not there for us to use as markers. The star scores that are being quoted are actually star scores from three years ago, which was in year one of our reading initiatives and math programs that got started. And so, obviously, as far as seeing the progress of that, I want to see that progress. I want, I want all of our schools to be better. No matter whether it's an A school or an F school, I want them all to be better than they were. And I think we have programs in place to do that, and I want to see those programs continued.
Okay, I think you kind of answered this, but we'll go a little further. Do you have children or grandchildren currently in SAISD?
So, I have three children in the, well, sorry. I have two children in the district. I have a second grader, a first grader, and then I have a son who will be a kindergartner in this upcoming year.
All right, so what is your number one complaint about our school system here? From a parent's standpoint?
Yeah, from a parent's standpoint.
Since you have a child in the school?
As a board member, I would say, well, we'll go both ways. As a board member, I think, because I was thinking that first, I have to re-change that. As a board member, I think my number one complaint would be trying to get more parent involvement. I mean, in all of our schools, I think increasing parent involvement would be beneficial. And we have some programs that we're trying to encourage that, but that's also a slow and steady. As a parent, we've had a great experience in San Angelo ISD so far. I think we have been blessed to have great teachers and great principals. So, it really, as a parent, I don't have complaints at the moment.
Okay, what do you like best about our school system?
So, one, I like the fact that it's a local system, meaning it's every kid in town, okay? But it also, we have these neighborhood schools to be able to have a small school experience in our elementary schools. But then, as we get to our high schools, we're able to get programs where, you know, Lakeview, we have programs that allow for kids to get pre-credit for engineering programs in college. We have CTE and advanced placement programs at Central that are amazing. I mean, there's, there's not another school in the area that offers as much as our two high schools offer for our kids, whether they're going to CTE or advanced programs or ROTC, whatever it is. We have, because of our size, we're able to get programs and because the district has invested in things that allow for career readiness, I think that that has been a huge blessing for kids coming out of SAISD.
Okay, well, I'll change the way we're going to get your perspective on a variety of topics, kind of like bullet points. You can keep it short or you can expand on them, however you want to answer them.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so first is transgender restaurants and showers.
I'm not aware of it being a problem yet in our district, but I would not, I don't have, I don't have any intention on having that be a problem in our district, is the short answer. I would think that we could solve that with a unisex bathroom or something for that particular child, but I don't believe that we are anywhere close to having, with me on the board, any issues with transgender bathrooms in our district.
Okay, teaching sexuality options to elementary aged children.
Again, I think that that is not something we are doing in our district, and I have no intention of doing in our district.
Critical race theory.
In regards to like the idea that all laws are prohibited.
Critical race, critical race has to do more with the shade of your skin.
There is a, I just want to make sure I'm answering the question correctly. The fact that like all laws are sit there have a patient asking about this today.
Really? An unfair advantage?
So, what I would say to that is, I think that whatever side of politics you're on, the Constitution has given successes to both sides of the political spectrum and losses to both sides of the political spectrum. And so, we have a great Constitution and Bill of Rights and laws that have allowed for the progress of this country on both sides. And so, why would we think that that fundamental document is wrong?
Misinformation and omission in our textbooks today.
We, I'm against it. And I'm sorry, I don't mean that. But like, I think we always, no matter who's writing a textbook, whether it's an esteemed professor from the University of Virginia or University of Texas or Dartmouth College, there's always going to be some bias by anyone who's writing a textbook. I think as a community, we have to look at what is being watched as parents. We have to look at what is being taught. And as long as, in our district, if a parent has a concern about what is being taught in that class, we have a process to bring that to the head of the department, principals, eventually the board, if there's, if there's an issue. So, I mean, I think making sure that we are, as parents, involved in what our kids are learning, that solves that problem.
Old-fashioned reading, writing, and arithmetic.
So, I've been a huge proponent of the reading initiative that we've done over the last several years. I obviously, so I'm a physician, and as a physician, I believe that education is very, very important. You don't get to be a physician without believing in education. And although there are so many unique things that are going to, that my kids are going to have opportunities to do jobs in, that, you know, we always hear this stuff, that we don't even know what jobs our kids are going to be able to have 20 years from now. And I think that's absolutely true. But whether you're programming a computer or going to medical school or doing CTE, like, well, everything, you have to be able to read. And to be an informed citizen in this community and in this country, you have to be able to read. So, reading's huge. No matter where school goes as far as what opportunities we're offering, the fundamentals of reading are important. I would say the same for math. We have done a push for math as well, and what did you say?
Reading, writing, and arithmetic.
And writing is also important. But I think that, I think you become a polished writer by reading other polished writers. I mean, I think if you're not reading, you can't learn how to write. So, I think reading is the most important of all of them. You can't do math, you can't do word problems, you can't read, so.
Teaching life skills.
Can we pause for two seconds?
Sure.
I'm sorry, this is one of the pediatric.
All right, we had to take a quick break for a phone call. I think we were on teaching life skills.
So.
Your perspective, yeah, I'm sorry. Kind of help bring it. Yeah, we're still on the bullet points, we've got a couple more to go, so.
So, I mean, there are some life skills that we should absolutely be teaching. Money management, I mean, there, I mean, there are some, absolutely some life skills that we can teach through our economics classes, through our CTE programs, that are absolutely important. Healthy diet, we can do every day with our cafeteria and our child nutrition department. So, within reason, there are absolutely life skills that this district should be helping with.
Okay, teaching the trades, plumbing, electric, construction, et cetera.
Yes, we should be treating, we should be teaching what, when I went to school and before were the CTE classes that were, you know, wood shop and can, all of those classes. We also should be treating, teaching the newer CTE classes with graphic design and, you know, getting in this town, medical certificates and medical assistance certificates and things that we were doing through Howard College and ASU, to give people the opportunity to get ahead, whether it's paying for less college because they got high school credit for it or they're more hireable as the second they get out of high school, depending on where, what their goals are.
Okay, mask mandates and social distancing, when youth have virtually zero issues with COVID-19.
So, as the physician on the board, obviously, there's been a lot of concern and thought and reading regarding COVID-19 and masks. I'm very proud that we were the largest district in Texas to open on time this year. And we did that by using masks and using some safety protocols that have kept us in school and kept us from having to have large-scale closures, okay? Weather, the data for kids, you're right, they don't get sick very often. Transmission, the data on that's not as clear as some folks want to make it be and for the safety of our teachers. There's absolutely, we can't have a school without staff. And current quarantining, quarantine guidelines have not changed. So, right now, if a baseball player is not wearing a mask, we can lose our, our entire baseball team can be put out of district play because one kid had a positive test. And for those seniors and juniors and kids on those baseball teams, they don't, we don't want them to lose the opportunity to do something because of COVID. So, our current mask policy is one for staff safety. And as the kids get, excuse me, as the, our staff are getting vaccinated, we're, I see no reason we won't be mask-free come August. But at the moment, the quarantine guidelines that we're still having, we're still following would mean that kids are taken out of school for close contact and exposures. And kids don't do as well when they're out of school.
Okay, you kind of bled into the next bullet point. You're good at that. Students in sports being required to wear masks while competing.
So, most of our kids are not required to wear them while competing. Our practices have had masks and for that same reason that we want to be able to prevent a team from being quarantined. And with the current guidelines on what the definition of close contact is, the teams, we would have had teams quarantined, whether it's academic teams or sports teams. We would have teams, had teams quarantined, having to forfeit games and not gain the opportunity to continue with their extracurricular activities from just quarantine, not because kids were sick, but because they were, had close contact with someone who had a positive test. And as you're correct about, like, most of our positive tests are coming from someone who's in a household with a symptomatic adult. But then that kid tests positive, and since that kid is positive, they are now, the entire group can be quarantined.
Okay, last bullet point, changing the names of schools.
So, as a current member of the school district Board of Trustees, I obviously voted to change Lee Middle School's name to Lone Star Middle School. From my public comments, I made very clear, I do not think that there are any other schools in our district or names of anything in our district that meet the criteria, threshold, whatever, to change any further names in our district. I am, I mean, I'm not ashamed, I'm proud of the fact that we did change the name of Lee Middle School. I think, I mean, I'm a history major from University of Virginia, settled studying the Civil War. Robert E. Lee is a man that is a, is a Civil War hero, is a Civil War hero. I grew up in, I grew up in South Texas, I grew up in San Antonio. I mean, I, he's been a hero in our community for a long time. Naming a school after him, and once the question has been raised, continuing to name a school after him, when children who walk through that school have now had the question raised to them. If I vote to keep that name, then I'm saying that that name is more important to me than how the children who walk through that campus feel. And I think it's more important for a kid to be walking through a middle school proud of the name that they have on that middle school than for our community to keep the name of a middle school. That's my opinion, that was the opinion of the board and opinion of a lot of people who I talked to. But it's not a decision we came to lightly, obviously.
Okay, I'm gonna change off of bullet points now, go back to questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you be willing to stand up for the betterment of our children against TEA mandates?
Yes, I mean, we have a, if the TEA is mandating something that is not right for St. Angelo, then that's something we need to stand up for. Part of the, if you've been involved in our district, some of our community accountability system that we're trying, we're one of, I think, 22 districts in the state that's trying to come up with a better accountability system. The whole process of that better accountability system is so that we can reflect our community locally and what our kids are experiencing locally, so that we have a voice. Because otherwise, you are following a mandate that may or may not work where we are.
If our community, if our community does not want these or other progressive, secular, anti-faith standards in our schools, would you fight to bring back godly standards to our local school system?
So, I go to, I'm a Christian, I go to see your visit, you know, I'm at this church. I absolutely think that, like, our, our entire country was based on Christian principles. But whether or not we can't promote, it's above the school board's pay grade to decide what we can promote in the district. That's done by representatives that are way above our local school board. As far as for me, I will do everything I can within the law to provide an opportunity for kids to express their faith and do, and be exposed in a positive way to those things, whether it's, you know, a Young Life event or having them on campus for lunch or, you know, or after-school activities, et cetera. But as far as what, we have to go with what's currently legal and from that standpoint as well.
Okay, do you think there should be an exit test for students to show that they can handle basic life skills, basic employable work requirements, and not just simply pass along to keep the numbers looking great in order to receive their diploma?
I think all of high schools should be a skills test to do that. I mean, I think if you're not, we should be measuring that all along the way. We shouldn't need a test at the end to know if kids can be productive citizens. If you wait until there's a test at the very end, you're, you're not going to solve anything.
Okay, the budget and overseeing facilities are a large part of the responsibilities of the school board. Share your ideas on how to keep our facilities in good repair and updated without busting the bank.
So, I think Standard Times asked a very similar question.
I don't know.
Yeah, I know. So, the reality is, we do have aging facilities, and we have a lot of facilities, which as a community, we've decided is important. And I think as a parent, I think it's been a great experience for my children to have a smaller elementary school and, and have a neighborhood elementary school. The reality is that does cost money to maintain. We've been running a very fiscally conservative budget over the last four years and looking back even longer than that with our current board, which has allowed for a lot of improvements to become through fund balance. We just replaced the entire HVAC systems of our middle schools. We've been able to add security vestibles and fencing and cameras to all of our campuses without having to do a big bond to promote to do that. We did all of that in-house. So, we're doing, we just did, changed the LED lights so that we can decrease the cost. All of that money can then be used to do more improvements. Now, the reality is, our budget is mostly going to be paying our teachers and staff, and that's what it should be for, quite honestly. And, but it's a balance of figuring out how to keep our facilities up and running and not making it hard on parents and community members, because that also is bad for kids if we, if everyone's broke because of taxes. That being said, we, we have aging infrastructure, and at some point, St. Angelo's, we're gonna have to look at what our long-term goal is for the next several generations to make those structures work and be great learning experiences for the next kids.
Do you think our current financial structure, budget-wise, is too top-heavy administratively? And would you be willing to trim at the top to allow more funds to be utilized at the actual school level?
So, at the moment, and we look at that, I haven't looked at that number since last August, I'll be honest, because that was when the budget, but I believe we're completely aligned with the rest of the district, the rest of the state, and even lower as far as administrative costs. Some of the programs we've put in place to help our reading programs, et cetera, we have done at the administrative level because of multiple elementary schools. We have to have, instead of having someone at each campus, we've put them as an administrator so that they can be over multiple campuses and facilitate progress and help, and just be an extra person to help those principals and those teachers. So, absolutely, we're not going to cut classroom teachers in order to continue to have, we're not going to cut classroom teachers and not make a cut in an administrative level if it comes to that. But I think at the moment, our dynamic is working well for St. Angelo ISD because we're having progress. And so, I don't want to change that at the moment.
Okay, do you prefer automatic pay raises or more of a merit-based raise, and why?
You mean, like, so as far as across the board when we rate? So, I love the idea of merit-based pay raises. I mean, like, that makes sense to me, it makes, I want a merit-based pay raise, you know? But I don't think it's fair to say that every classroom is the same, every group of students is the same. And I think the best way for our teachers to be working collaboratively and our staff to be working collaboratively so that every kid in SAISD gets the benefit of every great idea from each classroom teacher. Because some classroom teachers are going to be better at have a great idea on math, some are reading, some are writing, and they're going to have great ideas. We want them to be encouraged to share those ideas. And I think if you start putting people against each other on merit-based, I don't know for kids, that's a win.
As parents are not happy with what TEA is requiring, what are you willing to do to be their voice to the state?
So, one, first off, I always want to be responsive to our community members. Through the last several months, whether it's COVID emails or Lee Middle School emails, I've tried my best to respond to our community members on a host of issues or whether it's about how their kids are going to make up for the fact that they missed so many days because of being out, all those things. But I think the next step is being willing to go talk to your state representative, your state representatives, or the commissioner, or be a part of TASB or whatever it is to get more information. And I'm more than willing to reach out to our representatives to go forward on that. I previously talked to our state representative, Drew Darby, who's been more than helpful with our district when we were looking at House, when they were looking at House Bill 3 to get more funding for public schools. Representative Darby was very helpful in that, and St. Angelo, you know, was the beneficiary of that.
I'll tweak this question just a bit. Describe how you see yourself representing the people that have voted you into this office. How, what are you doing? How are you representing the people on the board?
So, I think, so.
Thinking about the people.
Yeah, so first off, yeah, so first off, like, personally, I think the charge of a school board member is to do what's right for kids. And so, I want people to vote for me who think that that's the right thing, too. I want everyone to vote for me, but, you know, I want people to know that that's what I want to do. That being said, like, this is, every decision is not Taylor Kingman's decision. Taylor Kingman talks to anyone who will talk to him about each decision and make sure that we are making decisions best for everybody, every kid, every family, every community member. The reality is, I don't know everything. I got a second grader, a first grader, and a soon-to-be kindergartner. I need guidance from some of my friends who have older kids. I need guidance from some of my friends who no longer have kids in the district, who are seeing what their kids or their grandkids are not prepared for or are really well-prepared for when they get out. And so, I think the reality is, it's, it takes a village, and I want to be the person who ultimately has to make that decision, but who gathers all the information from as many people as possible to help facilitate that decision-making process.
Okay, any closing thoughts or comments you'd like to share?
So, obviously, this year has been a tough year. We joke about the fact that, why would anyone want to run for school board against us after dealing with COVID and middle school? dealing with COVID and middle school name changes and everything else? But there's some really great things going on at San Angelo ISD. And when my wife and I moved to San Angelo, we chose San Angelo ISD because we thought it gave our children the best opportunity to have success in San Angelo. And I want to continue in that process. I want to continue to work for what's best for kids and I would really appreciate everyone's vote.
So if someone wants to reach out, and do a Facebook page, website, phone number, email?
So I, I do now have Facebook. I didn't have Facebook, I'm like the only younger person who didn't have Facebook before, before this school board election. I've not ever been on social media and, but I have a Facebook account, which is Kingman for SMD3. And then I have an email, which is TaylorKingman@saSD.org. And, but you can find me at Shannon, you can find me, I'm happy to, if you reach out, you can find me anywhere, I'll be happy to respond to emails, Facebook, any questions, I'll be happy to talk to people.
All right. Thank you so much for your time this afternoon and I wish you all the best in your race.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.